Thank you. We'll call this meeting into order. Welcome, everyone, to Monday, June 6, 2016 council meeting. If you have a cellphone, please turn it off during the meeting, please. We would like to have a moment of silence to observe tonight, and if you would keep Muhammad Ali in mind, he was a great fighter, that I think everybody should remember that, and he'll be missed. So, moment of silence, please. Thank you. Plead allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Barnes.
Here.
Reed, Brown.
Here.
Decker.
Here.
Kraus.
Here.
French.
Here.
And Mayor Domingo.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor and council members' comments, are there any comments from, yes, Garrett?
Just a quick, so, there was a resident in my precinct who, I had a conversation with on Facebook, but she was, wanted to know about the, whether or not the sweep, the street sweeper was still in operation, and like, the route, because I guess there was a concern about, I guess, on Dyrumpel Street, Dyrumpel Street. So, I just wanted to make sure that I said that to the council, because I said I would, so.
Yes, we have a street sweeper. I've seen it.
Yeah, no, I've seen it too, but just to make sure it gets through.
I wish it would come down my street, because the trash on the side of the street is kind of nice.
I'm not sure if it's out.
It was out this morning.
Oh, you did see it? Okay. So, it is out, I just don't know what section, so, okay. Any other? Yes, please.
I would just like to thank the mayor and our city manager for recognizing Muhammad Ali. By ordinance, this is the mayor's meetings, and I just want to thank him for allowing that to happen, because I love Muhammad Ali. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Couple of things. First, I wanted to say congratulations to our high school graduates that have come through from Albián. A special shout-out to the eight Build Albián fellows who will be starting their retreats this Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. One of them, I think, deserves a special accommodation. Jean-Taj Wallace, after Build Albián fellows meeting with Larry Williams to do their training for the Summer Dreams that they're doing, consulted with Cheryl Mitchell about the possibility of doing a Marshall High School graduation parade starting in Albián. This parade down Michigan Avenue in Marshall is a tradition that's been going on for a long time, and Jean-Taj and Sierra went to Cheryl and asked that parade to happen, and that parade did happen, although it was in a driving rainstorm, ten or so. Students and some family were there to represent that first year. I'm excited about the possibility of that parade becoming an annual tradition, and I especially enjoy the idea of all residents of Albián who graduate from high school being part of that parade in the years to come. So, thanks again, Cheryl, for being flexible, and to Officer Kip, Chief Kip, for helping make that a reality. The second thing I want to report on is the AmeriCorps Vista Initiative that is coming to Albián this summer and fall. We have ten member positions to fill, and a leader position to fill in the areas of education, economic opportunities, and healthy futures. I've, myself and a bunch of people in the community, depending on the area of interest of the applicant, have interviewed a whole bunch of people. I want to publicly thank those folks who have helped me with those interviews, but also encourage folks, if you're interested, to contact me, or to go to the AmeriCorps Vista website where you can apply. We've placed four or five of those Vista members. We're probably going to be making three or four more offers in the next couple of days, but we're always looking for outstanding talent. So, again, we're looking forward to having that roll off, and again, thanks to the partners for helping us with that interview process. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Yes, Garrett?
I don't know if it was in the agendas that were given to the public, but I had asked for an agenda item for the single hall discussion. I just wanted to make sure that that's, we're going to discuss that.
That would be future agenda items.
So, I don't know if that would be the I.
Okay. Okay. I don't know if it's either way.
I got just a couple of things. Before the council leaves tonight, please stop and see me. I have a present for y'all.
Ooh.
Cullen's evaluation sheet.
I'm so excited.
And...
Before I leave, I'll show you two how to write a five.
And I'd like to mention that petitions are available now for mayor and the open council seats. They can be picked up in the clerk's office, so, if anybody's interested in any of those open positions, please stop and get yourself a petition. And that's all I have. If that's all everybody has, we'll move on to the next thing, which is the public hearing. The public hearing is on the 2016 sidewalk exemptions. Cheryl, if you would like to give them an overview, then I'll open the public meeting, okay?
Okay. Mayor and council, if you recall, you had approved the opportunity for residents who we have identified, well, let me back up. You approved the sidewalk assessment program some years ago, and since that time, it has become clear that all of the sidewalks that need to be installed in the city are not going to be completed by the end of the assessment period. So, it seemed only reasonable to allow an opportunity for those without sidewalks, or who have new sidewalks already, to ask to be exempted from the annual assessment. So, today is the public hearing in regards to those who wish to be placed on the exemption. I think we received four in the mail as well, so they don't have to appear here.
One more I received today.
Okay, so, five.
Okay.
Five received by the clerk already, and there may be people in the audience as well who are interested in seeking that exemption.
I will open the public hearing. The staff shall next present their prepared reports, if any. Counsel, do you have any? The public shall offer any comments to the hearing, so as long as they are not excessive in length. So, are there anybody in the public that wants to speak on the sidewalks? Step forward with your name and your address, please.
My name is Robert Brown. I live at 1237 Highland Avenue, and I'm speaking in behalf, on behalf of the sidewalk exemption we put in for that. I talked to one of the reps in it about, oh, some years ago, and I talked to my councilman, and he had been working on along with Cheryl, and we'd like to be exempt from that tax, from that sidewalk tax, because they told us, we'll never get sidewalk tax, I mean sidewalks in, period. And so, we'd like to be exempt from that. I would like to be, and our community, our neighborhood, would like to be exempt from that sidewalk tax.
I think we'd have to have the individuals and them identify their address.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Bob.
Yes.
Are there any other comments? You don't comment.
Brenda Davis, 1229 Highland Avenue, and we also want to be exempt from the property tax, I mean sidewalk tax.
We have a letter already.
Okay. You've already sent yours in?
Yes.
Excuse me, Bob, did you turn the letter in as well?
No, I have not.
Okay.
Ron Roth, 1234 Highland Ave., and same thing.
Okay. So, out of all of them, Brenda's the only one that turned in?
It's been a while.
Yeah, yeah, I was...
Just a minute. Is there any more comments from, if not, I'll close the public hearing now. The council shall debate and decide the public issues. Counsel? Yes?
Would it be possible to set up meetings where people could come, and we could help them fill out the paperwork to apply for the exemptions? Because I think some people would be confused with the process, and might need help, and I wouldn't know how to file for it if I hadn't had the experience as I had. There are people that don't know how, and they could use some assistance. So, I was wondering, you know, there were meetings a year or so ago where people were being at churches and having discussions and open forums. Is this something that could be done in these precincts to offer people assistance where they would qualify for it?
I think the tax rolls are getting certified on like, the 20th, or something like that? Or am I incorrect, and the tax rolls are...
No, wasn't there a time they had to be in by? And what is that time date?
The 20th.
Of this month?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, Garrett?
And I will say, because Davis's and Brown's are in my precinct, and they did send me a letter asking for this about a while ago, and I think it did, I think it did go to City Hall, because I got a copy of it, too. So, I can, I had to dig through my files and find it, but they did send a letter.
Well, like I said, I got this one here in front of me, it's handwritten. Do we have an actual form?
No.
We don't have an actual form, so...
Yeah.
This, this is fine?
Yes.
Okay. So, I guess, anybody that, you know, this pertains to, do a handwritten letter, but make sure your address, and your name, and what you're requesting for is on that sheet, and it's got to be in by the 20th of June? Okay, close the business? Okay? If you have any questions about that, please call City Hall. The city manager's office should be more than glad to answer any of your questions.
I guess I just need a clarification from our attorney.
Okay.
I think what I'm hearing council indicate is that even if we haven't received the letter as of today, as was stated in the public notice, and individuals did not appear today, that's what's required in the public notice, that we're, can we extend the period of time for people to seek the exemption, or does it really need to end today?
Give them a deadline. I mean, I would say you gave them a deadline to the public notice, so, if you're going to extend it, I would say you're going to run into a problem. I'm not saying it's impossible, but I'm going to say, I'm going to say it's going to be problematic. So, I guess my, if, I, my advice would be probably stick to the public notice unless you plan on doing another public hearing with an amended notice.
You don't want to do that, because we've got to get busy. And these are only for people that don't have sidewalks. This isn't, if you have sidewalk, you can't get out of, huh?
I think it included, I think that's been really the, that's been really the issue about, I guess, for me, how I, my understanding of the issue is that the difference between a tax and an assessment is, an assessment is a guarantee of receiving something. So, you know, when we collect, we collect tax for something, we can use it for, you know, for anything, you know, that's, has to do with city, the city business. But, when we're, when we've created the whole, when we made the entire city an assessment district, whether or not you have sidewalks or not, I think the city's saying, we're going to, we're going to replace sidewalks. So, I think, I think when we passed, I think it was open to, to everyone. And I'm, I'm okay with sticking with the deadline that we set, but I think it was open to everyone, whether or not you had sidewalks or not. So...
Is that the way it was wrote?
Well, I think the way that, I mean, right now, the assessment applies to everybody, but I think the reason that they did it, and I'm not, and everyone here knows my position on, on it, because I'm giving you guys two different, you know...
Two different interpretations.
No, not two different, two di, two different memos giving the same interpretation of what I think is wrong with it, but I think the reason it was done the way that it was is because it's probably the, what they probably is going to be the least financial impact to all the property owners in the city, because realistically, the way that, that an assessment should be is like, for example, if we've got Councilman Barnes, Councilman Brown, and Councilwoman Kraus, all living, say, on a specific block, and there's $100 worth of damage to the sidewalks, $200 worth of damage to the sidewalks, and $300 worth of damage to the sidewalks, we make a special assessment district, we don't take all three and average it, we assess $100, $200, $300 to those specific properties. Those property owners pay those amounts, that's how a special assessment is supposed to work. That's not what we did here. We did, you know, $50 a property over a long period of time, probably, like I said, so it wouldn't have that kind of financial impact, but that's how it's ideally supposed to be structured.
Well, I'm just, I'm reading what it says here, that's why I'm going by that.
That was going to be my question.
Go ahead, Cheryl.
Does Highland Street not have any sidewalks, or do they...
It has a sidewalk on the west side, according to the satellite map.
What street?
Highland.
Highland.
Stops at the corner of the hill.
Yes. Right. It's a, it's a parcel on both sides, or just on one side, it's a parcel, the other side doesn't have any, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And, and the way I'm reading this right here, city for the 2016 recommended for those exemptions is that those parcels which presently have no sidewalk, so...
Okay, that's fine.
I, I don't want to get everybody confused, you, you're going to get a mass bunch of phone calls, nobody wants to pay, you know, so, I guess what we need to do is stick to what the Resolution 2016-37 says. And at this point in time, because if that's what it says, and that's what this public hearing was for, this will only be at this time for people that don't have sidewalks in front of their homes, okay?
And I just want to talk, I want to thank council for, for allowing this, and, you know, I've been pushing that because, you know, I just, if we want the city to be successful, we have to do things in the right way.
Mm-hmm.
And so, that's really something I'm convinced about, so, I appreciate it, and, and thank the citizens who took the time to, to request that.
All right. So, we're going to, we're going to go with what 2016-37 says, and that's just for the people without sidewalks at this point in time, okay?
Those who have, as of today.
As of what?
Those who have, thought they had something as of today.
Yes. Okay. All right. Are there any more on the sidewalk exemptions? If not, we will move on to presentations. The community engagement process and walkable community update by Danielle Nelson. Please.
All right. Hello, I'd like to reintroduce myself. As you know, I interned last year for Cheryl Mitchell, and my name is Danielle Nelson, and I've been hired on for the summer as a special projects assistant to basically keep the master planning process moving forward, and a major part of that is the community engagement portion. We, and so, we've been planning different community engagement meetings, and developing surveys and whatnot as part of the comprehensive planning process, but also the redevelopment-ready community process, which was presented on about a year ago to city council. And so, some of the goals for this, you should have received in your packet, the report that I had drafted for the Council of the Albion Cities, or Albion Walkable Cities Workshop. And so, some of our goals for the community engagement process is to gather helpful information for the planning commission to update the comprehensive plan, and also to make community engagement a more regular process. So, this is going to be a more intense period of community engagement and community outreach related to assessing the needs and the strengths and challenges of the community. And so, over the next five months, we are hoping to complete the more intense portion of this, so that we can update the comprehensive plan by the end of the year. And then, after that, we would like for community engagement to be a little bit more regular, such as having more regular town hall meetings and whatnot like that. And so, the first community workshop that we had was on May 12, and we focused on the idea of a walkable city to try and evaluate the strengths and challenges of the community using the idea of what a walkable city is. A walkable city is one in which walks are safe, comfortable, and interesting, as well as useful. And so, thinking about these ideas, we had community members complete a survey, but also break off into discussion groups, so that they could discuss as groups, as residents, what they feel the strengths and weaknesses are of the community. And so, some of the results from that, it seems that many people really enjoy not only the natural amenities in the community, but also the arts and culture community here. And so, they would like to see the people and the arts and culture of Albion be celebrated a little bit more, and also represented more through, not only through retail opportunities, but also through different events and programming, and, and things like that. And then, if you continue on with the report, some of the challenges that the community is facing right now is that we are, there is a number of lighted and abandoned properties, as well as inadequate street lighting. And not only that, people would like to have more opportunities to actually engage, not only in the downtown community, but in the neighborhoods, places to gather and meet. And so, one of the main things, too, is that there are a lack of retail opportunities for people in the community. And so, those were some of the main things that we had found, there's more details in the report. And in addition to that, tonight, we are actually launching a general community survey, and after I'm done with my presentation here, I'll have to excuse myself, so I can go over to the bone to relieve one of the volunteers that we have, who is collecting some survey data at Blues at the Bone. And so, later, I would like to continue to keep you, keep city council updated, as well as the planning commission updated on the process. And once we have some more surveys collected and bigger pools of data, then we'll be able to do a little bit larger presentation on, on some of the information that we've gathered. And so, moving forward, the next steps right now are to present this information at the next planning commission meeting, and I'll be giving them a little bit more details about the specifics of the results. And in addition to that, we're going to continue organizing volunteers for the next event. And the next community workshop that we will be hosting will be on June 29 at 6:00 PM. And as of right now, the tentative location is Karen Community Wesleyan Church at 1015 Irwin Avenue, and so, we're just waiting on a final confirmation on that, and we will have that by Wednesday. And we have also been working with a consultant, whose name is Rosalynn Jones, and she has been helping us do a little pro bono work in terms of the community engagement portion of the comprehensive planning process. And other than that, we're going to continue to develop surveys and attend various community events to collect some more general survey data, but also, too, we're going to be holding more, more community workshops like the Walkable Cities Workshop, so that we can start more evaluating the priorities of the, of residents, and some of the topics that will be covered, the next one, for example, will be on housing and development in the community, and determining what the priorities are for the community in terms of residential developments. And in addition to that, we are hoping to have future meetings regarding energy use, economic development and opportunities, as well as transportation, and a few other areas as well. And with that, I would like to thank all those who had participated in the event, because we had a pretty good turnout for the first one. We had about 35 participants, given the, some of the short notice that some people had on it, we had a pretty good turnout, and we're hoping the next one will have an even better turnout, we're going to definitely bump out, bump up the PR work for that, so, if you have any questions, please feel free. If not, um...
I have one.
Oh, yes?
Explain what the 12-mile challenge is.
Yes, the 12-mile challenge. So, that is something that I've been running around working on today. So, I, so I'm a senior at Albion College currently, and there's another student who is a junior, who is, if you've been seeing flyers, flyers around for Albion Outfitters, that is kind of an incubator that he's doing right now, using the Albion College Boathouse to rent out canoes and kayaks on weekends. And so, after that, he would like to expand, but part of that is going to be this 12-mile challenge that we have developed as a grant proposal for the Ford community. There's a Ford, it's from the Ford Motor Company Fund, and it is called the Ford College Community Challenge. And so, they are seeking out applications from students from, from colleges and universities across the country, and it's going to be for $25,000, and we have to create some kind of community event, as well as any other things related to that community event, and they will be giving money for that essentially. And so, what we proposed is to retrofit a bus with, with basically racks to accommodate bikes, canoes, and kayaks, that will be able to transport people between Albion and Marshall. And on top of that, it will also be helping to launch the Albion Outfitters store, which would be a downtown location, it would end up being separate from the college. And then, in addition to that, there is the actual 12-mile challenge, which, in light of the recent school merger, we'd like to find more ways to link Albion and Marshall physically, as well as as a community. And so, we are going to be hopefully hosting later in, end of summer or early fall, we will host the 12-mile challenge, which will be a way for people to travel between Albion and Marshall, either by biking, hiking, or river, so, or canoeing and kayaking, and also by rail, so, river, road, rail, and trail. And so, we'll also be giving, some of the money from that grant will hopefully go towards completing a section of trail between Albion and Marshall as well. And so, we are challenging people to take on the 12-mile challenge, and, and show how they're supporting the students that are now, you know, becoming part of this joint community. And so, with that, we made it to the top 20, and today, we went around filming everyone and asking them to accept the 12-mile challenge as part of the final stage of the grant application process. We made it to the top 20 out of hundreds of other colleges and universities. And so, so with that, hopefully, we will make it to the finals, and we will be one of the top five that get this grant, so...
Good luck.
So, yeah, thank you very much.
And thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, no problem, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And also, too, I'd like to just let people know that there are copies of this survey up here, and I'll also be over at Blues at the Bone for the rest of the night, and collecting more survey data, so...
Thanks again, Danielle.
Thank you very much.
Citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to agenda items only, and to no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Are there any citizens' comments on the agenda this evening? See none, we'll move on. Consent calendar. Approval of regular session minutes from May 16, 2016.
So, support.
Moved and support. Were there any questions?
On page 16.
Four.
Yeah. Where is that, Palm Park Committee and NAACP Responsing, please, are packing the NAACP as...
I missed that.
On page four, up C.
Discussion, Juneteenth celebration.
Approval of the city logo?
D.
So, take out the reference to NAACP.
We all set?
We vote on it.
Say again?
We could vote on that.
Vote on it? Did we miss it last time? I thought we did vote on that logo.
No, for the...
Am I reading the wrong one?
No, he's, no, he's just asking if we need to vote on a change to the minutes. The answer to that question is no.
Well, just make a correction. Voice vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same? Thank you. Items for individual discussion. Request approval of Resolution 2016-37, the sidewalk exemption.
So moved, support.
Moved and supported. Any questions? See none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. B, request approval to place delinquent water bills and abatements on tax bills?
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Are there any questions? Yes, Cullen?
Just so the council's aware, my office is going to be sending out a final warning letter to all of your property owners on the list, telling them that they have to add their taxes if they're not paid by the 20th.
Okay. Is that everybody on this big list in the back?
Yep.
Cool. Did we vote on that?
We didn't vote on it yet.
Oh.
We're going to support it.
Yeah, moved, okay. Any further questions? Not? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed. And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. On C, request for approval of crossout hall, should request approval of city easement, uh, agreement with Consumer Energy.
So moved, support.
Moved and supported, are there any questions? That was what we talked about with consumers earlier to the C ones. If there are no questions, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, just remember, that was for the city, not the ABA's property. Okay, all right. Uh, D, request approval of resolution twenty sixteen, uh, dash thirty-two, the approval proposal and contract with Lurkey's Mowing to, for small engine, noxious vegetable vegetation abatements and mowing bid.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported, are there any questions?
We still only got one bid, right?
Say again?
We only got one bid?
Just for that part there, am I correct?
I thought there were two.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
One for the small, one for the large.
Right, right. Okay.
How many people used before, so, yeah.
No more questions, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Kraus.
Yes.
French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. E, request approval of resolution twenty sixteen dash thirty-three, approval proposal and contract with John Hawkins with construction of heavy equipment for noxious vegetations, abatements and mowing, that's the second part of that.
So moved, support.
Moved and support, uh, any questions? See none, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember French.
Yes.
Barnes.
Yes.
Reed.
Yes.
Brown.
Yes.
Decker.
Yes.
Kraus.
Yes.
And Mayor Domingo.
Yes, thank you. Uh, F, the city manager report, not to last more than five minutes?
Thank you. First, in response to councilmember's round inquiry in regards to the RFP for the single hauler, we are working on that, uh, we just couldn't get in time for this meeting because of vacations primarily. So, I would say we'll probably be bringing that around the first month of July, most likely, in best July, I guess.
So, in terms of, uh, time, I think we're actually sending it out, what's the, what the time?
Immediately thereafter, if there aren't any additional comments or suggestions from council.
Nope.
And I wanted to, um, let you know that the EDC, we're very, um, thrilled with the partnership we have with the EDC, and, um, especially in regards to our comprehensive plan and the redevelopment-ready community, and they've been able to bring on board Rosalynn Jones, you may recall her first had a presentation from the MEDC, um, for the redevelopment-ready community, um, has retired. So, they've been able to bring her on board essentially for the summer to assist us with moving the process along. So, between, um, having her on board and having Danielle on board, we have a little bit more staff support to make this actually happen and get this finalized this year. Hopefully, by the end of the year, we should be completed. And also, I wanted to let you know that, um, she had already mentioned the next forum on housing, we're hoping to finalize the details on June twenty-ninth at the Carron Community, um, church, as well as the planning commission is changing their meeting date, it was normally scheduled for this, the Tuesday, June twenty-first, and it's changed to June twenty-sixth, that's a correction in the memo I gave you.
Twenty-eight.
June to twenty...
Twenty-ninth, I saw it.
Twenty, twenty-eight.
Tuesday the twenty-eighth.
Tuesday the twenty-eighth.
Tuesday the twenty-eighth.
And they will be hearing the, um, the site plan review relative to the Albion Hotel, their application. And June thirteenth, I needed some, um, feedback from you in regards to the Albion-Marshall Connector, I sent you the notice that they're planning to, um, share with their ridership, and that if they don't receive additional funding by July, June, July first, there's a tension to cease services, so we, um, we need to take all considerations, um, relative to what role City of Albion can play in helping to, um, continue that service. So, right now, you have a study session planned for June thirteenth, so I would like to get some, um, indication that you might be willing or interested in making that an actual council, special council session, so should there be a determination to, um, take action, we can do it at that meeting. So, I see a lot of head nodding, so I think that's okay.
Four.
Oh, I'd, I'd like to, what happened with this connector is that, uh, the funds ran short, and in order for it to continue through the rest of the year, because the government's on a different, um, pay scale than we are, that, you know, we're January to December, they're October or September to October. My recommend, they need forty-five thousand dollars to make this happen. Uh, Cheryl has set up meetings with everybody that she can for donations. My recommendation to the council is, because we worked so hard to get this going, we've gone from six people that started riding that bus to over five hundred people a month, effective July first, that's going to stop for those individuals, because we don't have the rest of the money to run for the rest of the year. My recommendation to Cheryl was that, we asked the council for the approval to take that out of our, uh, rainy day fund, which we normally don't do, but because of the cause, for the people that have really, really used it, I think it's well worth it for the citizens, for us to do that for them, to continue this without, for the rest of the year, so that they don't have to worry about whether they have a ride to the doctor, to the hospital, or anything else, so, that's my recommendation to the council, so when we bring this forth, uh, we need to have any further discussion, but I, I think we worked so hard to get that, so these people have a ride, that it would be a shame, this quick in the game to say, come July first, you're done. You have to find another way, you know, to the doctor and everything else, so I think it'd be well worth the council's approval to use that money. In the process, after we do that, is that Cheryl is still going to meet with these organizations to see if we can't get those funds back, to put that money back into that fund. So, it's kind of a, a win-win, but yet, if we stop right now, all those citizens that take advantage of that are going to be without any ride to doctors and hospitals and things like that, and I think we owe that to our seniors and, and the people that use that bus, so, that's my recommendation to council, and Cheryl will, uh, take that forth and write that up, so we can, uh, do that, so...
Yes.
Thank you very much, yes.
So, I'm here, if I'm hearing right, we will have a special council meeting on the thirteenth, it's not just a study session.
Correct.
So, will it be at seven PM or at, uh, six PM then?
I think it's at seven.
Six thirty.
Pardon?
It's set for six thirty.
The meeting is set for six thirty?
Okay.
Six thirty still good for everybody?
I think everybody was scheduled to be here at that time, right?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
Sure.
Let's keep it...
I don't mind having it at seven, if you...
I'd rather have it at five, but does that cut too short?
He's got to get here.
It's fine, six, six thirty's fine.
Six thirty, let's hit six thirty, all right? Okay.
All right. The Houghton County Lead Task Force is still meeting, um, they're moving forward with some plans relative, um, to three targeted, um, areas. One is decreasing lead in the homes and environmental exposure, the other is increasing, um, testing in children, and the third component is increased public awareness of lead risk. And they recently, I believe, were awarded a, um, a grant from the Albion Community Foundation relative to lead testing equipment, so we're hoping to have some enhanced, um, programs in testing rolling out very soon. Their next meeting is June ninth. Um, Juneteenth is, um, an initiative of the Houghton Park Committee led by councilmember Lynn Reed, and they're having their, um, event on Saturday, June eighteenth, everyone is welcome to attend. Is the parade at eleven, or what time is the parade?
It will start here at eleven with the proclamation, then it will proceed to the apartment.
Okay. And the Albion's, um, scrap tire collection is on July twenty-third, and that will be at the intersection of North Park Street and East North Street. Um, passenger vehicle tires only, no businesses, um, are allowed to bring their, their scrap tires.
I have a question. Who gets those tires?
Would you like them?
Well, I was just thinking, having spent a day at CAS Community and their, uh, doormat plant, they collect abandoned tires all over the city of Detroit, rather than having tires end up in a landfill, or burning forever in a large pile somewhere. I was just wondering if, if, I don't know if, if they're accepting tires, they may have more tires than they need, but, but I was just thinking in terms of an option that would make, reuse these tires in a sustainable way, by making...
I don't know if they're taking them to Huffman's anymore, does Huffman still recycle?
Yeah, I just want to make sure they're being recycled in some way, and I was just thinking, since CAS...
Yeah, yeah.
Provides employment for homeless people in the city of Detroit, it'd be, but I don't know if they take them, I just was not wanting them to just sort of disappear and we don't...
Right. Well, in Jonesville, there's a company that also brings in tires and, uh, crush them up and turn them into energy to run a plant down there, so, and...
Yeah, it's, uh...
The county's the one that's collecting these, right?
Yeah.
I'm sure.
Find out whether they're allowed to graze. Burning tires is a really, really bad way environmentally to get rid of tires, but...
Used to do it on the orchard when it got to go.
And the, um, Downtown Development Authority, um, they will not have their regular meeting this week, instead, they're having a business forum, which will be at the Albion District Library on June ninth, from six until seven thirty PM, it's, um, primarily aimed at our local businesses, one, to make them aware of the upcoming projects relative to, um, construction and the reconstruction of Superior Street, as well as to, it'll be an opportunity for, for us to get feedback from them as part of our visioning and the, um, development plans going forward. So, we're reaching out to the businesses to make sure that they're aware of the construction next year and other construction projects, as well as how can the DDA assist them during those, um, construction periods. And, now that she's left the room, Danielle, as you know, she's awesome, right? So, she, I, I nominated her for the American City in Town, what is it, I can't remember the writing, Igniting the Flame Award, this is for young people who are showing initiative as future leaders in government, and she's one of the finalists. So, you can go online and vote for her up to once a day, and I'll be sending out the links on how you can do that, I think it would be really cool if we can get a winner, she's the only nominee from Michigan, so I'm really excited about that.
So, how do you vote her?
She's going to send us the link.
It's the American City in Town, and they have a website, but I'll send the link out to you.
And you can vote mo- one time a day, but you can vote every day?
Yes. Or from different email addresses.
God, yes!
Just saying.
The winner, baby.
And I want to remind councilmembers, we have the bus tour of the city this Saturday, I think on the email, I said, starting at eleven, it ends at eleven, it starts at eight, but we can meet here in front of City Hall at eight AM, and if you can let me or Jill know how many of you are attending, so we can make sure we have enough vehicles to escort everyone.
I will not be there.
Right. And, we are very excited, um, the Summer Dreams and Peapods Camps start next week, and we have a new partnership with KCC, they will be providing, um, weekly robotics classes for the participants, so we're really excited about that. We, um, have extended the program from four weeks to eight weeks, and that's because of our partnership with the Albion, Build Albion Fellows, and we still have our, um, the food service, um, partnership with the Albion School for the first four weeks through June thirtieth, and then, uh, Marshall Public Schools will take over that food service for the second, um, component from July through, I think it's Aug- August fourth. So, we're really excited about everything, we've added weekly field trips, so they'll be going to different places like the Ann Arbor Hands-on Museum and a number of other fun, um, activities for the kids, so, it's a lot of fun, we encourage people to, boy, head and register soon, because it usually ends up with a waiting list, and it's only a hundred and twenty dollars for all eight weeks, so, I mean, it's quite a bargain, um, for anyone. And, we're partnering, those are camped on Monday through Thursday, on Friday, is, um, free movies at home theater. And Recreation will be providing van transportation at key points around the city, so that all of our kids are able to participate, um, so they'll have transportation there and back, and we're looking for a lot of fun this summer with, um, all of our partnerships and arrangements. And I think that's all I have.
So, the last five minutes wasn't even on my sheet.
You took up some of it.
Did you just, yeah, okay. Cheryl, if you don't mind, may I please tell everyone that your son, Tim, is now the new director of the Albion Community Foundation? Um, so, it's good to have an Albion night back into town that's, uh, gone through school and everything here and now, that took Elizabeth Schulteis's place, so, uh, Cheryl Kraus and Eric Kraus's son, Tim, is now the, is it the president, or what do they call him, Mike?
Executive Director.
Executive Director of the, uh, Albion Community Foundation, so, it's good to have somebody familiar back into that, uh, to, to, to do that, and congratulations to your family and Tim, so, it's, it's quite an honor, so, if, uh, that's all, we'll go on to future agenda items. Yes, Colin?
I just wanted to give the council a heads up, probably towards the end of summer, I'm going to be coming to the council, um...
Don't say a raise.
The, uh, last year, the US Supreme Court came out with a case, Reed versus Gilbert, which basically gutted every sign ordinance in the United States for municipalities, including our own. Unfortunately, nobody in Michigan has kind of gone ahead and started to pave the way into redoing those, so, we're always kind of searching in the dark, but anyway, uh, myself and our, and our planning director, John Tracy, has started going through our, our ordinances and, and coming up with, um, what's required, what's required now, our content-neutral ordinances, so, hopefully, by the end of the summer, we're going to be coming to you with twenty-four new ordinances for...
Going to break the record.
Um, your discussion and approval.
This is some political signs and the, the church signs on the...
That's what the case was about, that's what, that, that's what started it, was church signs, yeah.
Cool. Okay. Any other?
So, uh, I don't know if it was last meeting, the meeting before last, but I, uh, I don't know if we got responses back for times, but to discuss the issues I had sent out, um, I don't know if we could tack it on to, um...
Garbage haulers?
No, no, this was, um, we had the dis... You had raised a concern about public safety and the budget and those kinds of things, and so, I'd say that we should have a, a work session on that.
Okay.
And so, I, I, I don't know if, uh, anyone, if a date had been set for that, but I was, I'm basically following up on that.
Next one's turn, next one's...
Okay, that's one, okay, that's one, make sure, okay.
That was one of the work sessions that we had come up with.
Because there was, because there was, there was a work session for, we had several, right, there was one for, we were trying to set up one for the trust, one for, I guess we just did the connector, um, and then, we, okay, we had the one today, okay, yeah.
All right. Yes, Maurice? On May sixteenth, uh, I was absent, and action was taken after a discussion for the twenty sixteen street projects. Um, I would like to get that information, I don't know if you can let me go through, put it on, on agenda item, or just, should I stop?
I can get a copy to you.
Okay, I'm, I'm opening it up, you think one receives some streets?
I don't recall the listings, but I can get the...
Okay. I can't remember either, no.
Hey, you talk.
Well, Fitz Street.
Yeah.
Yeah, Fitz Street, five is going to get one.
Right.
I know that. I think, uh, you were getting sidewalk or something up in one, weren't we?
What road are we doing?
Am I correct?
No streets?
No streets?
No, not that I'm aware of at this point. We were, we were in a dilemma because we didn't, we didn't know whether we were gonna have to use money downtown or not.
Exactly.
Right. So nobody got streets?
No, Fitz Street, I do believe is on the north part of Fitz Street. I'm not sure what the length of it, between Browwell and North or what. I know that is definitely on the agenda.
Okay, I can live with that, thank you.
That what? So, you know, but I thought there was some sidewalk up in Cooper and up through there being replaced.
Sidewalks, yeah.
Yes.
But not the street itself.
Okay. Isn't that how we tried to balance that? Somebody was getting sidewalks, somebody was getting streets, something like that, so.
Yeah.
It's okay, alright. If there is no further, nobody's excused, everybody's here, so we don't need to do that. Citizens' comments. Persons addressing the city council shall limit their comments to no more than five minutes. Proper decorum is required. Are there any citizens' comments? Please come forth with your name and your address, please.
Kena Williams, four one four North Huron. Wednesday, May eighteenth, I stopped home around eleven AM. Shortly thereafter, members of the city water department arrived. I was told that the shut-off valve was broken and needed to be replaced at my home. City employees joked that my water was being shut off and suggested that I had somehow broken the valve and shifted the sleeve in the cap while plowing the snow. Just to be clear, the cap sits about two feet away from my driveway, and I do not shovel extra snow. The process used to fix the valve included hooking a large metal cylinder to the port in the ground. That cylinder was connected to the truck, and there were large vibrations. At this point, I went into the house to see if we had water. We had none. When I stepped back outside, a city worker was at the door. He informed me that they had called in the repairs and that my water was being shut off for non-payment. My husband made the payment an hour or so later. The city came back out to turn the water back on. We had no water. By five PM that evening, we had a small trickle. It is my belief that our pipes were damaged as a direct result of the work and machines used to fix a portion of the pipe maintained by the city. While I understand the rationale behind the city ordinance eighty-six dash four-one, which states that no claim shall be made against the city because of freezing or breaking of any water pipe, stopcock, or other apparatus, I am asking you to reconsider the wording and/or the interpretation of that ordinance. Again, it is my belief that the pipe from the main to my home was damaged as a direct result of the work and the machines used to fix the pipe maintained by the city. To operate a municipality and allow the work that you do to be done with no level of accountability to its homeowners and citizens is absurd and unfair. Our family went two and a half weeks with a trickle of water, taking five minutes to fill a pot just to boil water so my kids could clean themselves or to flush a toilet. Families in our community should not have to endure this reality at the hands of our city. We incurred a cost of two thousand dollars because of the work that was performed at our home with no accountability. I am asking that you look at the wording in the ordinance and provide some level of compensation to homeowners that are directly impacted due to work performed by the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens' comments this evening?
Jay Lomas, four oh eight West Ash Street. Council meeting next Monday. Do you want to, is it publicized on TV?
The thirteenth is the one.
Yeah.
My honorary day. Isn't that the one that we wanted?
If it's an official meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, you want to? Okay.
If we're gonna take action, it's probably.
Oh, I see, okay.
Be better.
Yes, six thirty?
Yeah.
Thank you much.
Yes, Maurice?
I'm sorry, I thought Jay was coming out to address Mrs. Williams's situation, because I have a question for Mrs. Williams.
I'd like to find out the whole thing, other, you know, we need to investigate it first, so.
I just want, I want to ask this question, though. Did she have the opportunity to come downtown and talk with the department head and then talk with the city manager concerning her experience?
Okay.
I need both of those things.
Okay.
What, you say five? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Alright. Yes.
I would be curious what steps we would take in order to investigate further what she, what Ms. Williams is talking about as far as the city's liability and/or possibly changing the terminology so that citizens do have a recourse.
Let our city attorney weigh in?
Go ahead, Colin.
Okay. I spoke about this matter with our Department of Public Services and city manager. And aside, our ordinance aside, there is what's called the Governmental Tort Liability Act in Michigan, which basically provides a broad grant of immunity from tort liability to government agencies unless there's a statutory exemption when the government or entity is engaged in an exercise of its governmental function. So in this case, doing water shutouts is a governmental function. So it's not just our ordinance, we're also immune from liability under state law. So, I mean, we could, we could change our ordinance all we want, we're still not, we're still immune under state law. So, and that was upheld by the Michigan Supreme Court in Massey versus University of Michigan Board of Regents in two thousand and three.
So.
That means we're not liable under state or law.
I, I, I have, I have one question, is that okay?
I'm sorry.
I would really like to just find out first what happened.
Okay.
Before we start changing and doing all of that. So I'm not trying to put you on hold, but I gotta get more information, and I appreciate you bringing that to the council. And I would like to get more information so I know exactly what happened. I've got an idea of what happened, but I don't wanna, you know, I'd rather talk with the water department and get that straight before we make any changes to rules or anything else, before we take it too far. So, okay. If there is anything else, are there any more comments? Come forward with your name and address, please.
Ron Roth, Mall Thirty-four Highland Ave. While we're on the sidewalk thing down there, I just wanted to throw out there while you're all here that I'm missing a six-foot so chunk of curb. And I'm pretty sure that's in no way, shape, or form my responsibility. And it's towards the driveway, and there's possible erosion. I'm not an expert at anything, but it could be problems that could happen. It'd be better if a sidewalk were there, so I just wanted to throw that one out there, too.
Thank you very much. You make note of that.
I'm just saying this because y'all were talking about it, why you all are fixing roads. Like, I believe I live on the worst road in the city. And you cannot dodge potholes, you can't get around them. It is clearly the worst road. So while you're looking at roads to fix, please just drive down Huron Street.
Thank you.
Pass the president's House of Lords. And the vice chief. On average, it's just bad.
And the, and the public safety director.
Alright. Okay, if there are no more, I will ask for an adjournment.
So moved.
Moved and supported. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed the same? Please stop by and pick up your envelope before you leave, please.
There you go, throw one out.
Okay.
I have their names on those.
Yep.
Oh, they're individually named? Ooh. I feel sad.